At this time I'd like to call the September eighth Wayne County School Board of Education meeting to order please. I need a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina general statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A one and A six and one fifteen C dash three nineteen through three twenty-one. To discuss confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina general statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A one and one fifteen C dash four oh two and to consult with our attorney for the board of education to order preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina general statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A three.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, my Mr. Folk. All those in favor of going into closed session, please raise your hand. We're in closed session.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. West. At this time, I need a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved, Mr. Kim.
I have a motion by Mr. West. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Folk. All those in favor of approving our agenda, please raise your right hand. We are unanimous. Very good. All right, at this point, we are on to item General Session Three C, the Annual Accountability Report. Leave this, Mr. Andrew Bass on deck.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Witch, your leadership team. I am pleased to be here tonight to share the 2024-2025 school accountability data with you. Another great year, but I want to jump right into it. So the first slide you'll see here is about test and accountability. We're going to kind of use these words interchangeably tonight. However, tests generate student achievement data. So those are your actual end of grade and of course, test, ACT, et cetera. Then we'll also talk about accountability. These are the models that are used to really let us figure out how schools did, how districts did, and then those are what provides us our school report card grades. So tonight, we'll review a few different pieces of data. The first will be the test results for all required end of grade and end of course test. We'll also look at other academic indicators considered ACT, ACT work keys, English learner progress, and cohort graduation rate. Then we'll take a look at academic growth per school, school performance grades for each school, and then which schools are designated as low performing. The type of test results that we'll be going over tonight are your end of grade and end of course testing data for reading, math, and science. We will be paying close attention tonight to grade level proficiency for consistency's sake that we've looked at in prior years, but please note there is another indicator of college and career ready, which are levels four and levels five. We will also be taking a look at the ACT, where it is measured as the percentage of 11th graders who have a composite score of at least seventeen. That is a notable change from last year. It was nineteen. It's been nineteen now for three or four years, but it has transitioned back to seventeen. Then we'll look at work keys, which is your percentage of 12th grade CTE completers who achieved the silver certificate or better to become a completer. That is two courses, two courses. It used to be four. Then we'll take a look at English learner progress, which is the percentage of English learners meeting the language proficiency standard on the English language proficiency test. Cohort graduation rate establishes a cohort of students at each high school to track their graduation rates. The cohort graduation rate is a function of the number of students from the cohort who graduate within a designated time period and the overall number of students in the cohort. Tonight, we'll be looking at four-year cohort and five-year cohort. Students can be removed from the cohort for various reasons, such as transferring to another school that does grant diplomas. Then we'll look at academic growth statuses. More information on that is it's an indication of the progress that students in the school made over the previous year. It's roughly equivalent to a year's worth of growth for a year's worth of instruction. Each school is given one of three designations: exceeded growth, met growth, or did not meet growth. That is not measured by us at Wayne County Public Schools. That is measured by EVOs. We'll then take a look at school performance grades. You can see here that the grading scale is listed for an A, B, C, D, and F school. That is calculated through eighty percent of their achievement results and twenty percent of their growth results. Letter grades are issued for each school overall as well as each individual subgroup. Tonight, we'll be looking at the overall by school. Then we will also identify K-two schools that receive the same letter grade of the school to which they send the largest percentage of students. That would be North Drive Elementary. We'll take on the accountability model of Carver Huts. And finally, alternative accountability systems for our alternative schools will be assigned a grade for the purpose of identifying comprehensive support and improvement schools and targeted support and improvement schools per federal statute. And then finally, we'll take a look at low performance status. For schools to be deemed low performing, they must have a school performance grade of D or F, and then a growth status of met or not met. If they have exceeded growth with a D or F, they are not low performing. And then a low performing district is one that has a greater than fifty percent of schools identified as low performing. We are no longer a low performing district. So we're going to jump right into our test results for tonight. We're going to start with grades three through eight reading. We'll take a look at this first graph. I'll explain it to you briefly. You'll see three lines. The red line represents state performance. The blue line represents the southeast region. And then the yellowish-orange line represents Wayne County Public Schools. One thing that I like to look at whenever I'm looking at these is, number one, just how we did compared to the state and region by looking at the gap and how far apart we are, but also how close we get in certain ones of these. In this case, you can see that the state, just taking a look at this was a little bit deeper dive, from forty-nine to forty-seven, so they took a step back of two. The region took a step back of four from forty-nine to forty-five, and then we remain the same in grade three reading.
One important point about this, and the state superintendent mentioned this in his message in delivering and reviewing data sets with the state board this past week, grade three reading was one particular area statewide, one particular area that was noted as having some difficulty in the recent assessment results that have come back. I am fairly pleased that we have at least held our own over the last year in what has been statewide deemed a very difficult assessment group. I do anticipate us to dig deeper into this in this period of time with the test results coming back to determine what we can do to attack these particular results to look forward to this upcoming year of growth in that area.
Yes, sir. For fourth grade reading GLP, you can see that we had an increase of six. The region had an increase of seven, and the state had an increase of five. For grade five GLP, Wayne County Public School had an increase of four. The region had an increase of two, and the state had an increase of three. Both have really good trajectories. Grade six, Wayne County Public School had an increase of two. The region had an increase of three, and the state had an increase of three. For grade seven GLP, the district had a four percent gain, region had a five percent gain, and the state had a four percent gain. So again, other than third grade, you can see a much higher trajectory here for grades four through seven. That is also noted here in eighth grade reading. Wayne County Public School had an increase of eight. The region had an increase of only three, and the state had an increase of three. So great job to the eighth grade reading. We'll now move on to grades three through eight math. Grade three math, Wayne County Public Schools increased by three, the region by one, and the state by two. You can see there, third grade math is just below the state average. Grade four GLP, the district rose two. The region increased by three, and the state increased by three. For grade five GLP, Wayne County Public Schools maintained where we were from the 2023-2024 school year, while the region and state both had an increase of one. In grade six math, the GLP increased by two for our district. Region saw an increase of four, and the state increased three. Grade seven GLP, the district saw an increase of four. The region saw an increase of four, and the state saw an increase of three. Grade eight, just like in reading, the math side also. Wayne County Public Schools saw a large increase of nine. The region saw an increase of four, and the state saw an increase of two. So great job to the eighth grade math teachers as well. We're going to move now to science. It's worth noting here that school year twenty-four, twenty-five was the initial implementation of the new standards, which meant the test has been re-normed. And like most re-norming years, we do see a slight step back. It is pretty normal, pretty common for that to occur. So whenever we look here at grade five test, you can see that Wayne County Public Schools stepped back six percent, but the region and state also stepped back with the region at five percent and then the state at four percent. Grade eight, you can see that that graph is very all over the place with the district, state, and region kind of all ending right there about fifty-nine or sixty. The state went back ten, the region stepped back twelve, and Wayne County Public Schools only took a step back of four. So again, we're seeing a pretty good common theme here in eighth grade. Next, we'll take a look at our high schools for English two, math one, math three, and biology. For English two, you'll see here that the district increased by six, whereas the region and state actually went back one. For math one, the district increased by ten. The region and state both decreased by two. You can see there, math one is fifteen percent above the state average.
This was one particular area, again, the state superintendent highlighted as a regression in the state, a real kind of puzzling thing for North Carolina to look at. But I could not be more pleased, particularly with the individual that's presenting these results tonight. Andrew has done a, just a really fine job with working with our math one students, all math subjects really across the district. And it's a true testament to him that we're where we are with our math test scores, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And then for NC math three, a very, very large increase for Wayne County Public Schools, twenty-three percent from last year to this year. The region saw an increase of eleven and the state of eight. But again, Wayne County Public Schools, an increase of twenty-three to sixty-five, again, right there at the state average. Biology, just like fifth grade and eighth grade science, you can see we did take a step back, but so did the state and the region with the re-norming of the test. The district stepped back three, the region nine, and the state five. We will now move on to grade eleven ACT scores, and then once again, I will emphasize that the percentage of students scoring seventeen or above. So on this next graph, you're going to see a major difference from the prior year. Please understand that was because it was from a nineteen cut to now only a seventeen cut. But you can also see here on the grade eleven ACT scores that the difference between the state and the district is getting smaller. It is continuing to get smaller. Over the past four years, the average has been about fourteen and a half difference from the state to the district. This year, there was only a difference of ten. So even with that, we had a pretty strong increase. Again, moved from nineteen to seventeen for this year. ACT work keys, again, this is the percentage of students with a CTE completer scoring silver or above. You can see that Wayne County is outperforming the state, that we are at sixty-one point seven with the state at fifty-nine point eight. That is one point nine percent difference above the state.
And this continues to be a focus for us, working on those work key results. I know Kevin Smith and his team, all of our high school folks are heavily focused and committed on this, so I do anticipate we're going to continue to see an increase in those scores.
By chance, are we still testing all juniors, or has that gone away? I know the county was providing funding to test all juniors.
So as with all decisions right now, there are monetary decisions that go along with this. And so at this time, we test all juniors who are concentrators or potential concentrators going into their junior year. And then, of course, all seniors will test, but we have benefited over the last couple of years with our relationship with Wayne Community College, being able to test our juniors. We're going to continue to do that, but on a more limited basis, and focus on concentrators and potential concentrators going into their junior year.
Now, was that a financial decision from the college or the county commissioners? Or, because the money was coming from the county commissioners to the college.
It was communicated through the community college to us. They were trying to make their budget work, which the budget comes, of course, from county.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to English learner progress. This is the percentage of English learners making progress toward exiting English learner status, composite of exits, and annual progress towards exiting. So if you'll take a look with me at this bar graph, you will see that we had an increase of nine point seven from past year, and then the state saw an increase of seven point nine. Again, the gap between the state and the district is two point two. We'll now move on to high school cohort graduation rate. We'll look first at the four-year. As you can see, the four-year, we saw an increase as our district at two point one percent, whereas the state only saw a point eight percent increase. With the five-year cohort graduation rate, Wayne County Public Schools saw a five tenths of a point increase, whereas the state also saw a five tenths of a point increase. Well, next, look at M-class. M-class is not in the accountability model. However, it does show the work of our K-two teachers. And the first slide that we're going to look at with M-class compares the beginning of year BOI to the end of year EOI. The green part of the bar graph here represents students who are at benchmark. Blue represents students who are beyond or above benchmark. So for the beginning of year, that represented forty-five percent of our students, whereas at the end of the year, that was sixty-six percent of our students, an increase of twenty-one percent. When we compare that to national data, students started at fifty-seven percent in the at or above benchmark, but they only went up four percent to sixty-one. So I think that highlights the work of our K-two teachers. The next slide represents the English learner data as it relates to the DIBELS test and M-class. Those students entered at twenty-nine percent at or above benchmark, but exited at fifty-four percent. Again, that's an increase of twenty-five percent, very big difference. That is how the growth is calculated for our K-two teachers. The next slide shows the schools and their M-class data from BOI, beginning of year to the end of year EOI. I would like to point out a couple here. Carver Elementary had an increase of thirty-three. Brogdon Primary, Fremont, North Drive, Rosewood, and Tommy's Road were all at twenty-four or above. So very nice data there. Next, we're going to take a look at academic growth status. As you can see here, Carver Elementary, Charlesby Acoft, Dillard, Eastern Wayne High, Eastern Wayne Middle, Grantham Elementary, Mount Olive, Norwayne, Spring Creek Elementary, Spring Creek High, and Spring Creek Middle all exceeded growth this year. Two that I'd like to point out to you are Eastern Wayne Middle and Spring Creek High had a growth rating of one hundred. That is the maximum that you can get. Other notables here was Charlesby Acoft with an increase of twenty-seven point eight, Diller Middle School with eighteen percent growth, Eastern Wayne High nineteen point six, Eastern Wayne Middle thirty-eight point four growth.
One thing I will share with you also, when the data came out... One thing I will share with you also, when the data came out last week, I think it went live at 10:15 when the state opened a portal for districts to be able to look at their data in comparison to how other districts did. The most shocking aspect of how well Wayne County Public Schools did this last year was illustrated to me in one sheet that was on that results. Out of the top schools in the state, in the top four schools, not top 4%, but the top four schools in the state, Wayne County had two of those schools. And it was Eastern Wayne Middle.
And Spring Creek High.
And Spring Creek High School had 100% growth. And Eastern Wayne Middle went from an F to a C. Never seen that happen. A school jumped that far that quick. And Spring Creek High School, a traditional high school in North Carolina's model, it's almost impossible for that school to earn a grade of a B. They earned a B. And they're not the only one that did that. I'll talk about those in just a little bit. But just, just a couple of points about just how strong the growth was this year.
Thank you, sir. Next slide, we'll look at the schools who met academic growth. While I'm not going to read all of those too, I am going to point out the noticeably, the notables, excuse me. Goldsboro High School increased 24.1 in their year-over-year. Southern Wayne High, 22, and Rosewood High, 14. So three of our high schools there who showed significant growth from one year to the next.
And one other notable point in particular about Goldsboro High School, they've moved from an F, a low F, to a D, and now they're knocking on the door of a C, all in a very short period of time, very short period of time.
We have five schools who did not meet growth. Those are Carver Heights Elementary, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Granton Middle, Meadow Lane Elementary, and Wayne Middle High Academy. Next, we'll take a look at school performance grades. These are made up of achievement of 80% and growth of 20%. They're given a score, and then that score is given a letter grade. Last year, when we had two A schools, is with great pleasure to say tonight that we have three A schools. Wayne School of Technical Arts joined Wayne Early Middle and Wayne School of Engineering as an A school. Last year, we only had two B schools, or, excuse me, yes, two B schools. This year, we have four. Charles B. Acock went from a C to a B, Rosewood High went from a C to a B, Spring Creek High went from a C to a B to join Granton Elementary as a B school.
And again, I mentioned earlier about how difficult it is. We have three traditional high schools with varying degrees of socioeconomic concerns, varying degrees of subgroup concerns. They made it happen. Wayne School of Technical Arts jumped to an A. Masterful work there being done. And again, it's, it's just a testament to how hard our principals are working in those areas, and our teachers, and our students. I could not be more pleased with those test results.
And then finally, we had many schools with a performance grade of C. The three notables there are Southern Wayne High School and Northeast Elementary, who both went from a D to a C. And then, as Dr. Witcher mentioned, Eastern Wayne Middle, that went from an F to a C. So big jumps for those three schools there. Schools receiving a performance grade of D were Brogdon Middle, Brogdon Primary, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Goldsboro High School, Granton Middle, Mount Olive Middle, and Tommy's Road Elementary. Last year, there were nine schools with a D. This year, there are only seven. Then, schools receiving a performance grade of F are Carver Heights and Dillard Middle. But there were three schools that received an F last year. This year, only two.
And I will say, it is important to note that Dillard, although they received an F, they exceeded growth, so they are not listed as a low-performing school this year.
Well, next, look at low-performing status. The, again, these are schools that have a designation of a D or an F that met or did not meet growth. So if they exceeded growth, as Dr. Witcher mentioned, they will not be low-performing. So the schools receiving low-performing status designation this year are Brogdon Middle, Brogdon Primary, Carver Heights Elementary, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Goldsboro High School, Granton Middle, and Tommy's Road Elementary. Now, of those schools, we saw Brogdon Primary had an increase of six points on their overall composite. We saw Carver Heights have a 4% increase on their school composite. Goldsboro High School, positive eight, and then Granton Middle and Tommy's Road Elementary at plus one. It is worth noting, Dillard Middle, Eastern Wayne Middle, Northeast, and Southern Wayne High, all exited low-performing. Eastern Wayne Middle, Northeast, and Southern Wayne, all are now Cs, with Dillard Middle exceeding growth. This year, Brogdon Middle did enter low-performing status. Our final slide for tonight, or, excuse me, our final two slides of tonight will be comparing the performance composite for our southeast region and surrounding areas, as well as the growth comparison for the southeast region and surrounding areas. For the performance composite, you can see over on the left-hand side that Wayne County Public Schools is at 50.3, again, increasing from where we were last year. We have jumped above another district. On the right-hand side, you're going to see each school district with two different numbers. The first number is the growth composite for this school year. So for Wayne County Public Schools, we saw an increase of 3.6. However, you can see that in parentheses is 8.7. That includes last year's growth and this year's growth. So you can see that in our region for this year, we had the second highest growth. But overall, when you look up and down the page, Wayne County Public Schools is by far showing more growth than any other school district around us. And then our last slide will compare us to local charters. You can see on the left-hand side, Wayne County Public Schools has a performance composite of 50.3, Wayne Prep 43.1, and Dillard Academy 28.8. On the right-hand side, you can see the growth from year to year. Wayne Prep at 7.2, Wayne County Public Schools 3.6, and Dillard Academy down 0.6. We did not include STEM Academy in this composite because they only have two grade levels who were tested, third and fourth grade. With that, this concludes the 2024-2025 school year accountability test data report.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Yes, sir.
One thing I'd like to point out, that in crunching some additional numbers, two years ago, we had 53.3% of our schools in low-performing status. This year, we conclude with 23% of our schools in low-performing status. That same year that I became superintendent here, we ranked 91st out of 115 school districts in North Carolina. We were bumping along the bottom. Today, we're at 61st out of 115 school districts in North Carolina, meaning that we've jumped almost 30 districts, 30 counties, 30 city units, whichever one taken together to leapfrog in two years in our performance. My projections for this upcoming year are calling for four more points, and I'll talk about this at the principal's meeting this week, four more points of composite growth. So if you're watching, principals, start making your plans now. Four points and two more schools at minimum out of low-performing status. And I don't see why we can't pull all the rest of them out, but I'm requiring four plus two. If we do that, we'll be somewhere in the range of 40th ranked in North Carolina out of 115 school districts, if projections hold and our trajectory continues. That'll be over 50 districts, over half the counties in the state that we would have jumped, to continue moving for academics, for our students in this state, in this county. So I am immensely proud of the work that we've done, again, in a very short period of time. It is, I've not seen it in looking through the Green Book data. I haven't seen anybody else that's even close. So that's why when I'm watching the news and I hear somebody highlighting something going on at an early college, somewhere else, in some other school district, I'm a little bit puzzled why somebody's not picking up on what Wayne County Public Schools is doing, because we're a district on the move. And we're making progress for our kids and for the people of our county. It's hard work, but our principals are working day and night to make a difference. And I can tell you, when you walk in the halls of our schools, it is palpable. You can see it, you can feel it, you can see the teaching and learning going on in classrooms, and that's a good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we should do a round of applause.
Dr. Witcher, I have a question for you, because I saw it on, I think it was Channel Five this morning, that the state school board and Department of Public Instruction are considering changing the grading. Did you see that? How will that impact? I mean, what do you know what they're trying to, are they going to change the 80/20? Is that what they're looking at? Because that needs to be changed.
It's long been talked about. People that have been in the profession, doing the work, have long said, a school district like Wayne County is very different than a school district like Carver Chapel Hill City Schools, which is very different from Avery County in the western part of the state. Every part of the state from east to west has differences because of demographics, because of socioeconomic status, because of ability to fund and assist schools. That's why we have the low wealth funding formula. I think someone had a great idea to create that some time ago. That says, through the virtue of that funding formula, that there are differences between school districts in North Carolina. It says it, whether we agree with it or not. And so there are differences, and people are beginning to take notice and say that the struggles are different in each different school district. So to hold us all to some, some standard, 80/20, for example, is, is, is not fair. And so it is being looked at. It has been recommended through the panel, they're studying it, a special blue ribbon committee that was established by the legislature. It has not gotten any traction. It has not moved any further than just that status. There are discussions of districts being able to pilot the different standards. For example, Texas has a system where they have four standards that they look at. Each one receives a star, and then there's an overall star rating based on those star standards. And so that is one model that's being closely looked at. If you look at North Carolina's past and how they've adopted things, Florida and North Caroli- Florida and Texas tend to factor heavily in what North Carolina does on any various group of things. So I would say keep an eye on that. Attendance is something that's looked at, community support of schools, teacher credentials, there's all different types of standards and things that are looked at. But to say that any one of those is going to come about anytime soon, I would not be willing to hold my breath for that.
Great question.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Witcher.
Yes, sir.
All right, at this point, we're up to item 3D. Mr. Kevin Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Witcher, I am going to keep the good news flowing tonight. I am happy to announce to you that we are through with the accreditation process for Wayne County Public Schools. Now, many of you are probably aware that accreditation happens every five years, and that schools across the nation actually go through accreditation every five years. It changes names, but it's always the same thing. Wayne County Public Schools chose, at its last accreditation cycle, to move from district accreditation to institutional accreditation. Under institutional accreditation, our high schools go through the accreditation process individually, on their own. I am happy to announce to you tonight that all nine of our high schools have been through the engagement review and have now been fully accredited for the next five years. CogU team was very complimentary of our high schools. They mentioned how responsive the teams were and how detailed their work was, and how genuine they were in their self-assessments and their plans of action. What I can say to you is, it was a tremendous amount of work, and our high schools are to be commended on their wonderful efforts to represent Wayne County Public Schools. So at this time, Dr. Witcher, if you'll come forward, and if our board members by district, if you will come forward, we will, we will have a presentation of the certificates to our schools. Our schools also received a banner, which is here. We didn't bring them out because they're pretty large, but it's also an accreditation banner. Those principals are in my office. You can pick those up on the way out the door. So District One, Mr. West.
I would like to say before we get started with the presentations, I think I probably worried Kevin to death on a daily, if not certainly weekly, aspect throughout this entire two years, it seems like we've been going through this accreditation process. But from the minute we got started, Kevin was on top of it in terms of working with our CogU accreditation team, working with principals, making sure the process was, was flowing. I don't know how many times I reminded Kevin that it is specifically wording in my employment contract that the superintendent shall, shall, Richard, if you're watching somewhere, that the superintendent shall include, or ensure that our schools are accredited. And so I'm pleased to announce to you tonight that all of our high schools obviously have been awarded accreditation status, which is no small feat. And so at this time, I would ask Nelson Cunningham to come forward, and District One Representative, Mr. Chris West. And I'd just like to say, District Six doesn't have a high school. That's why I'm sitting here. At this time, would Mr. Lynn Henderson, District Two Representative, and Southern And also, at this time, if Wayne School of Technical Arts Principal will come forward, will present. District Three, Ms. Cowan, if you'll come forward, please, for Goldsboro High School. Next up, Mr. Joyner, Rosewood High School.
Please, Mr. Wayne got his early.
Ms. Mr. Foote, Eastern Wayne High School.
Thank the board members. Thank you.
Okay, next we are up to 3E, the Healthy Act of Children and Social Mental Health Policy Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Richard, Leadership Team. I'm pleased tonight to present our Healthy Act of Children and School-Based Mental Health Policy Report. Ms. Livengood and I have spent a lot of time working on this and getting this prepared to go out. Some of our highlights from the report, program and practice successes, we're really pleased about the implementation of the opioid settlement fund to support early intervention educational initiatives and to also install vape sensors. Our top three priorities for this year are unchanged from last year. Top priority will be mental health counseling and social work. Second priority is safe school environment and the third is alcohol and other drug use. We had a staff wellness initiative this past year. We did Foundations and Factors Program with our licensed nutritionist as well as our staff have access to self-care wellness courses through All One Wellness. The average percent of class time for our middle schools, their health education average was 38%, which is up 26% from last year, with physical education comprising 62%. In the sections on withholding physical activity as punishment, we had one 6th through 12th non-traditional school where we, a new principal came in and saw that happening. She has addressed it, it's been taken care of, we're reporting that. However, it is not happening now. Let's see. And also we have some challenges and some successes with implementation of the 30 active minutes for our K-8 students. The non-traditional 612 schools have the most difficult time trying to implement that and they're always looking for new ways to get that implemented. But I do want to say our middle schools in general do an excellent job with this. It is hard to schedule 30 minutes if your kids are not going to PE every day. They work hard to make it happen and they come up with some creative scheduling plans. It's much easier for our K-5 kids or K-4 when they're at an elementary building. The School-Based Mental Health Plan got a new form this year, so it's all being updated and moved over to the new form. Ms. Livengood has done a lot of work with that. I think Mr. Dirksen has done a lot of work with that. And all of that information will be ready to be uploaded and shared with DPI by the 15th. Do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. White? Thank you very much for you and Ms. Livengood's work, hard work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, I think now we're up to 3F, Beginning Teacher Support Program Plans. I think, Mr. West, Weeks, sorry, Weeks. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Richard. This afternoon, we'd like to provide you with a brief presentation that provides a summary of the information that is found within the Beginning Teacher Support Handbook. That is something that we will ask for your approval for during the Board Action Section, but our team would like to provide you some information regarding what can be found within the handbook, as well as some information regarding our Beginning Teacher overall program support in Wayne County. I'm pleased tonight to have with me Dr. Brown, our Director of HR, as well as two of our Beginning Teacher Coordinators, Ms. Lewis and Ms. Stamper. Ms. Martin, also one of our Beginning Teacher Coordinators, unable to be with us tonight, but an important part of our team. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Weeks, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Richard. It is our pleasure to share with you some information about the Beginning Teacher Support Program. As you see on the first slide, we would like to share with you our growth over the past several years in the area of NICES completion, at the end of the year, PDB completion. We are still aiming at 100% and we are still getting 100% with the hard work of our principals and mentors. Also, our evaluation completion, as you see there, is 100% and our teacher working condition survey has increased over the years and increased since last year at 96.6%. Our, I'm sorry, strategic plan data, as you see there, PT support program, over the past four or five years, we have increased our end-of-year survey participation and that is how we determine how well our mentors are working and how much support we are providing our Beginning Teachers. In our mentor end-of-year survey, our mentors provide us with feedback and we use that feedback to determine what we need to do with our program. On the next slide, you will see our Beginning Teacher numbers. Currently, our first-year BTs are 47, BT2s 48, bless you, and BT3s 62. So, which brings us to a total of 157, which is about 14% of our teacher, certified teacher population, our teacher staff there, and we currently have 52 site-based mentors. 72% of those Beginning Teachers are alternatively licensed teachers. So it's very important that we provide, continue to provide support for our Beginning Teachers and have those mentors in place to support them. On the next slide, you will see the BT support data for 24 and 25. We again ask our mentors and our Beginning Teachers to provide feedback so that we can improve. We are in a constant place of improvement and looking back at what needs to be done so that our teachers get what they need. 94% of our BTs view the support received as a new teacher helpful in impacting student learning and as you can see that in the test results as well that Dr. Richard shared. 93% of BTs view the support received as a new teacher improved their instructional practice. And with that large number of Beginning Teachers, it's very important in order to continue to gain the academic success that we would like, that we continue to support them in that. And 83% of our alternative licensed teachers felt prepared for their first day of school after AL orientation, which is a five-day orientation. So at this time, we will have the BT coordinators come to you and talk about the five different standards that support our program and our guidelines for us from the state.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amy Stamper and I'm going to be presenting to you Standards 1, 2, and 3 tonight. Standard 1 is our systematic support for high-quality induction. We are, of course, in compliance with the TCED 016 policy that has a Beginning Teacher Support Program required, but we want ours to be of good quality. And so we do that by ensuring that we have a licensure specialist, that's Cassie Barnes, that works with our BTs, especially those alternatively licensed teachers, to be sure that they're continuing on the path to become a career teacher. We have yearly requirements for a three-year induction process, so we have our Beginning Teachers 1, 2, and 3. We also have multi-tiered support for them, both at the district level but also at their school level with their site-based mentors. We do have a new teacher orientation every year for our new teachers that includes working with education partners in our community such as the Chamber of Commerce, the credit union, State Employees Credit Union, Delta Kappa Gamma, NCAE, and others. We have a BT workroom and many, many counties do not, and not only do we have one, we have a really great one. And we always get very excited that we're able to provide some supplies that BTs can come and use to make their classrooms better, more inviting. We also offer mentor stipends and again, our county offers a very nice mentor stipend so that we can get those higher-quality mentors that are really looking forward to working with our Beginning Teachers. Standard 2 is how we select our mentors, how we develop them, how we support them. Every year, our principals will submit their applications for a certified high-quality teacher to be the mentor for their school. Some schools have more than one because we do have a four-to-one BT mentor ratio in our schools. And then we have requirements for our mentors that they conduct monthly meetings at their school. We provide materials for them to do that so that they have a shared folder where they've got their agendas and the items that we would like for them to discuss district-wide, but we also allow them to also use school information that would be relevant just to their school. They also assist their Beginning Teachers in their professional development plan. They also will sign off on that mid-year and end-year as well. They reflect with them on those PDPs. We also ask our mentors to informally observe our Beginning Teachers multiple times throughout the year so that they can provide that targeted feedback for them in improving their instruction. They also arrange for our Beginning Teachers to go and observe other model teachers, not just their, they come observe their mentor, but they also arrange for them to observe other teachers in their school. Observing quality teachers is so important for Beginning Teachers. And then they also, mentors are going to participate as our professional development providers this year. Additionally, mentors have to serve on a committee and our committees include some social events, but they also include, as I said, they're going to be presenters at our professional development this year and they also will help us at our end-of-year process for BT3s. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. And we're also providing some professional development for our mentors. We train them several times throughout the year, but we provide in a shared drive for them, monthly professional development to help increase their capacity for mentoring. And then I'm going to go ahead and present now Standard 3, if we can go to the next one. Mr. Dirksen, thank you. Mentoring for Instructional Excellence. As I was saying, they hold their monthly site-based meetings and we give them some things to help them with that. The beginning of the year, they're going to focus on PDP development. Classroom management always is a top choice for our Beginning Teachers when they are looking for things they need help in, is classroom management and lesson planning. So we give them supplies to work with BTs on that. Also, at the end of the year, they're going to help them with artifact collection as they're getting close to their summative conferences. They're always helping the alternative licensure teachers keep up with their requirements. They are asked to sometimes bring in guest speakers from our community for their site-based meetings. We've had, I know before, Ms. Emerson has presented at those, Mr. Joyner has presented at those that I know of. And again, like I said, we ask them to present the needs of their specific schools at their site-based meetings and they are differentiating the support that they give our BTs by going and observing them and also meeting with them both before and after school and during their planning time. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lewis for Standard 4 and 5.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Bianca Lewis, one of the Beginning Teacher Coordinators, and I will be discussing Standard 4, which is Beginning Teacher Professional Development. This year, our professional development is going to look a little different. Last year, we had presenters from the outside coming in, but this year, we are pleased to announce that we're going to be using some of Wayne County's finest. Beginning Teacher Coordinators will be completing some professional development, our mentors, some of our National Board Certified Teachers, and then WCPS ed tech facilitators. All of our Beginning Teachers will participate in two learning labs this year. Those two learning labs will be held at Eastern Wayne High School, thanks to Mr. Jones, and we are inviting our BT1s, 2s, and 3s and our international teachers are also invited to participate in that. We also are focusing on, could you go back there? Okay. Our AL1s and 2s, we're going to be working with them this year as well, again, with classroom management and lesson planning. That seems to be the areas in which they struggle in, so we definitely want to continue to provide additional support for them. And Standard 5, Formative Assessment of Candidates and Programs. The BTSP program is monitored every five years and this is our lucky year. In October, just a few weeks away, NCDPI will come down and they will take a look at all of our documents to make sure that we are in compliance. Each year, we have to revisit and revise the BTSP plan and we also have to meet with a peer support group and usually those peers are BT coordinators either within our region and we have gone outside of the southeast region before to assist when necessary. And of course, we are collecting our BT yearly documents. Those documents include our NICES plans, their PD plans, extra curricular forms if they're involved in that. Additionally, the NICES, all of our Beginning Teachers are on the Comprehensive Evaluation Plan, which means that they are to be observed four times, 45 minutes, 45 minutes.
Not 44, 45.
That is correct, 45 minutes and one of those observations does include a peer. And as I already forementioned, our monitoring visit is actually October the 16th, 2025. Jenna McIntosh, our Regional Educational Facilitator, will actually be meeting with us tomorrow so that we can go ahead and start preparing the way for our visit and I'm looking forward to that visit and I know that we're going to be distinguished in all of our areas. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to point out how pleased this board is, I can speak for myself, about your PDP completion rates and your observation completion rates because that was something, that holding the teachers accountable and the principals not getting their observations done was a problem. So I appreciate y'all holding them and getting that done because I think it's made huge divvying sense, Dr. Richard, as being here with the principal, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. West, I think you're actually at the, Weeks.
Weeks.
I am so sorry. I am so sorry.
They look so much alike.
I'm so sorry, Mr., I don't know which one I need to apologize to the most, but I mean to apologize.
I would apologize to him.
I apologize, Mr. Weeks. But I think we're now into an action item, an action item that we need to approve the plan, basically that you just presented.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Our Beginning Teacher Support Program Handbook, something that we're required to submit. The information that was just shared with you is the information that is in the handbook. It is a little bit longer in the handbook. We did provide you a quick summary, but we are requesting your approval for that handbook tonight.
Okay. I need a motion for us to approve the Beginning Teacher Handbook. Mr. West will make the motion. All right, thank you, Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. West.
All right, I'll second it. Thank you, Mr. Latham. Okay. All right, so we have this properly motion and second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I think it's a good time for us to go ahead and hear our speakers. I mean, it is right at 5:30. So if you want to get the speakers, Mr. Dirksen? All right, we'll now go to our public comment. It is 5:30. Okay?
The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about the performance of school to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. A portion of the meeting is for the board to hear the matters of interest from the public, however obscene, vulgar, or profane statements and statements and statements reasonably perceived as to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Any organization or delegation representing the same topic is encouraged to select one individual to make a presentation on its behalf. In certain cases of emergency, information received during the presentation will generally be acted upon at the time it is received but will not be considered for potential action in the normal course of business. Individuals with concerns or complaints are strongly encouraged to initially seek a response from the school district officials responsible for the program or facility, or from the superintendent. Any person who wants to distribute written materials or handouts to the board is directed to leave its items at the speaker's podium for the board's clerk to retrieve and deliver to the board members.
Do we have, you got?
Do we have a speaker?
Two speakers.
Okay, we got two signed up. Ms. Summerlin Super.
Kimberly.
Kimberlin, sorry.
Kimberly.
Okay. She should be speaking about bus transportation.
Sorry, wrote out my memo. I am writing as a parent of an elementary student at Rosewood Elementary who was approved for an out-of-district transfer due to his childcare location. For over a year, he has safely and consistently ridden the bus to and from his childcare center with no issues. Last week, I was informed that he is no longer permitted to ride the bus despite the fact that the same bus will continue to stop at his childcare center to transport other students. Whether or not my child rides, the bus will still travel to the childcare center due to the number of enrolled children within district. This decision is deeply concerning for several reasons: academic and behavioral standing. My child has never had any disciplinary problems and consistently receives excellent remarks. There is no performance or conduct basis for this change; fairness and consistency. Other children at the childcare center will continue to have access to transportation, singling out my child and other out-of-district children who attend before and after childcare is inequitable. Parental impact: this policy change places a significant burden on working parents. Without bus access, I'll be forced to sit in a thirty-minute morning drop-off line and an hour to an hour and a half afternoon pickup line, which could jeopardize my employment. Community investment: as a taxpayer contributing to the district, it is both disappointing and disheartening that resources my family helps fund are being withdrawn in a way that directly harms my family and child. I respectfully request reconsideration of this matter and reinstatement of bus transportation for my child and other out-of-district children. This abrupt change is not only disruptive to my family, but also inconsistent with the district's stated commitment to a student's success and family partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lakeisha Harris, and she'll be speaking about transportation.
Good afternoon, everyone. I too voice the sentiments of Ms. Super. My son, too, is a student at Rosewood Elementary. He also attends Fundamentals Child Daycare Center. We, I received my call on Friday, and I have until the nineteenth to figure out situations for transportation for my son because I drive him twenty minutes every day. I was hoping that this could be erased kind of quickly, but it does put an impact on me as far as, like she stated, having to take the morning and afternoon and now worrying about childcare for aftercare because I do work. I would love for some reconsideration on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, and the speakers this evening have voiced concern, we'll say I sit in on these hearings when they're held before the board. For the ones that are renewed each year, there is no hearing, but they do receive the same letter and notification. In the hearing, it is verbal notification to the individuals requesting out-of-district placement for their student, as well as the communication in letter format from Ms. Banks from Student Services, that transportation is not provided. If there has been some arrangement in the past, that is not what is allowed for in policy for out-of-district students that attend. We are looking diligently, feverishly, at every single option we can to maximize seats on our buses. We are slowly winnowing this number down in terms of shortage of bus drivers and seats within each of our attendance zones, but that seat on that bus, we're trying as much as we can to provide them for students that are in district in those particular areas. So we're having to strictly enforce, if you do not live in that attendance area, school bus transportation is not provided, and that is by district policy. So I do just want to clarify that particular point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I, can I ask one question about that, just simply because I did have a phone call from a different parent at a different school. The daycare itself was actually in district daycare. They obviously lived out of district, and of course, there is that. If there are seats available going from the school to the daycare, which is in district, and that child is verified to be a child at that daycare, are they able to get that transportation to the daycare if it is in district?
That would be considered for a possibility, but what I've asked our principals and assistant principals at each school site to do is to maximize by state cap on that yellow bus. Every seat for a student that's requested, for example, and I'm just using a random number, if the capacity on elementary bus is seventy, and that may in fact be the case, depending on the make and model of the bus, but if it's seventy for that route, we're trying to make sure that there are seventy students on there, because we're doing an injustice to parents if we're not maximizing every seat on that route. So we're doing a better job of that this year than what we ever have, which is most likely why we've had to strictly enforce, if you're not in district, we do not provide transportation. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving to our next item, we'll be going to item four B. Mr. Foke, for CNI committee report.
Yes, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on Wednesday, August nineteenth. We went over five items. First item, which has already been presented tonight, was the Cogni accreditation, which was presented for our information. Second item, which was also provided earlier as information, was Healthy Active Children in School Mental Health Policy Report. It was presented to the committee for information. The next three items were presented for action by the committee. The MOU with NC advice comes from the committee as a recommendation made by the committee for the board for approval. That is item F on the agenda tonight. The fourth item was Curriculum Instruction Purchase Orders and Contracts, came from the committee as a recommendation by the committee for approval of the full board. There were several items on the contract list that needed legal review. That is item number, or item C, three C on the agenda tonight. And then the last item was the Community Supporting Schools contract, which comes from the committee as a recommendation made by the committee for approval of the full board tonight. That is item three E on the agenda tonight. Item three D were CNI contracts that were added after the committee meeting and will be presented separately.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you very much. All right, item four C, the Curriculum Instruction Purchase Orders and Contracts. They do come to us from committee, so they do not need a motion, there's an implied motion, so we just, we don't need a second, excuse me. So everyone had a chance to take a look at those items. Does anyone have any question about those eighteen items on curriculum instruction?
Have they received legal review?
They have. The version that's uploaded to board docs at this time is the one that initially went to CNI before they received legal review, so the final versions, I think, are all sitting and ready to be executed, and they're not the ones that are included in board docs at this time.
Okay.
Oh, no, that's for the next item, is it not?
The ones that are on, the ones that came to committee, you have the copies of the contracts that were in the draft motion. They have been returned by Alex to Ms. Emerson and Dr. Gillespie, so they have passed legal review. So what we need now is a motion for those without legal review because they are ready. The next group will be the pending.
Okay, so they did come from committee, so we already have an implied motion going on. So therefore, I'm going to just take a vote. All those in favor of approving these, please raise your right hand. Very good, all right. So then we go on to the next item with the ones that did not come before committee.
Thank you. The first is for Venture Rehab Group, Doing Business Has Strive to Thrive. This is for instructional support for English and Math at North Drive. That is a typographical error, looks like N-O-E, but that should be N-D-E. That's going to be paid out of their state fifty funds at the cost of eighty-six thousand dollars. This contract has been legally reviewed. The next is for Cross River North Carolina Therapy LLC. It is an MOU for ABA therapy. It is not applicable for a funding source, and the contract has had legal review. The next is for Blue J ABA LLC, again, an MOU for ABA therapy services. There is no funding source, and it has had legal review. And the last is Above and Beyond ABA LLC, again, a MOU for ABA therapy, and this contract has had legal review. There is no funding source.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Dr. Aris? If not, I need a motion to accept these.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Foke. Do I have a second? A second from Mr. West. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, we're now up to our Community Supporting Schools contract.
That one also came across from committee, does not need a motion or a second, comes from the committee as recommendation.
Okay, all right, so we have an implied motion coming from committee. All those in favor of the Community Supporting Schools contract, please raise your right hand. Very good. The NC advise from MOU, the same thing. So all of those in favor of item four F, the MOU with NC advise, please raise your right hand. Excellent, all right. We're now up to the Finance Committee, Mr. Wade Latham.
The Finance Committee was called to order at ten AM on the, what was it, the eighteenth, I believe?
Says the eighth.
The eighth. Anyway, it was last month's. Minutes from the previous month of July where you manually approved. We had one purchase order for finance, and it was approved for final approval to the full board. It was one donation for two hundred fifty dollars, again, sent to the board for approval. The eighteen CNI purchase orders have already been approved by the board, and they were approved by us and deferred to CNI. And the CSS Committee Supporting Schools was also part of that, and we had some closing comments. It went fairly quickly, took about twenty minutes, and the meeting was adjourned.
All right, excellent. All right, so now what we need to do is we need to approve the donations, and they were accepted by committee. Therefore, all those in favor of accepting the donations, please raise your right hand. Excellent.
That was item I, I believe.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, is H a duplicate?
You got H still, the one purchase order, I believe.
Is there a purchase order in there?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed it, thank you. Let me spin it around. Yes, the Spectrum Business one.
Yes.
Okay, all right, once again, it did come from committee. So all those in favor of the Spectrum Business Internet Service, please raise your right hand. Very good, thank you. All right, which now takes us up to Mr. Sanders with Facilities.
Okay, the Facilities Committee met on August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and motioned to approve the following items for the September eighth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. The first one was Activity Surplus Requests for School Buses, and number two was Support Services Purchase Orders. Number three was Architect Additional Services Requests from Rosewood Middle Gym. Number four was Rosewood Elementary Classroom Edition Owner-Architect Agreement, and number five, Maintenance Module Unit Surplus Requests. Additionally, the Facilities Committee received updates and information and/or discussed the following items: High School Access Control Update, and we also discussed a proposed offer to purchase the Holly Street property.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, items K, L, M, N, and O come to us from committee as a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Just for clarification, on N, the Architect Additional Services for Rosewood Middle School Gym, that's an approval of the plan. Next month, the contract amendment would be coming to the board for execution. From speaking to Dr. Hales, the commissioners have this on their agenda for their meeting later this month, so the contract amendment won't be developed until that's approved officially by the commissioners as well.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, would you like for us to approve all of these in one vote?
Yes, sir.
And then O should be pending legal review. I think we're waiting to hear back on final edits from Pinnacle on that contract.
That's fine, too. Okay.
Opinion of legal review vote.
Opinion of legal review vote, okay. Well, can I have a motion for us to approve all of those from K, L, M, N, and O in one vote?
So moved.
Okay, I got a.
Second.
I got a motion to do one vote by Mr. Foke.
And that's with the O pending legal review.
With pending legal review.
Pending legal review, seconded by Mr. Latham. All right, all of those in favor of approving in one vote, please raise your right hand. All right. All those opposed? All right, we have one opposed, okay. At this point, we now vote, because I think it passed six-one. We will now vote K through O in one vote. All those in favor of approving those, please raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Six-one.
All right, we are now to item P, the Southern Wayne Fence Project Bid Contract and Approval. Mr. Hales.
Doctor.
Doctor Hales, excuse me, Doctor Hales.
It's all right. Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Richards, board members. Come to you tonight with the bids. We had five bids for the Southern Wayne Fencing Project, with the lowest bidder being Pinpoint. So I come to you really, and you may want to do this, in two motions, one to accept the bid, and then one to accept the contract. It has been legally reviewed, and so I come to you tonight with Pinpoint Fencing for the Southern Wayne Project. That includes all the gates we have spoken about, eighty-three thousand, ninety-four dollars, and eighty-four cents.
And to clarify one thing from Dr. Hales, there was one bidder who was lower, but they were rejected for not being responsive. Their bid messed up the specs completely and was totally off, so.
Okay, all right. Alex, just for point of clarification, does there need to be two votes on this?
I think it would be easier to have a motion to approve Pinpoint as your lowest bidder, and then a motion to approve the contract that's been drafted.
I need a motion to approve Pinpoint as our lowest acceptable bid.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Latham, a second by Mr. West. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, now we need a motion to accept the contract.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Henderson, I have a second by Mr. Latham. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Very good. All right, excellent. Okay, we do not have any board spotlights tonight, even though we did a wonderful job of spotlighting some great things in the district that were going on, Dr. Richards. So now we are up for the consent vote.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and our items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings, open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
All right. I now need a motion for us to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. West, do I have a second?
One clarification, could close session minutes remain closed in that motion, Mr. West?
There's close session minutes from.
Yes, okay.
I will second that motion then.
All right, thank you, okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. West, a second by Mr. Foke, for the minutes to remain closed from the closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Very good, thank you. All right, we are now up to our board member and superintendent comments. We will start with District 1, Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say, and I'm sure that this will be everybody's sentiment, but just giving congratulations to Dr. Witcher, his leadership team, all of our building administrators, teachers, students, and the support staff of Wayne County Public Schools. Because we, this was phenomenal news for Wayne County Public Schools, the academic growth, and I think that the accountability and expectations and the addressing of discipline throughout the district and the classrooms was all three big factors in getting us where we got. So, I would just, those are my comments. Thank you, Dr. Witcher, excellent job.
All right, District 2, Mr. Henderson.
I want to, I would like to echo the comments that Mr. West made about the accountability report and the excellent report that was given by Mr. Bass. I think it does show that things are going up and going in the right direction. I'm real pleased with that. Many of you will notice that we did not have any policies to come forward at this particular meeting, that reason being that we've done such an excellent job in the past that we were up to date. We do have a new policy, PLS that is in. We will have a policy committee meeting on that Wednesday, and I think we have eight policies that we will have to review at that particular time. But again, my hats off to Dr. Teshur and to the legal team for making sure that we do keep everything in order. And it was very interesting to see, as I looked at that mental health report that Dr. Ms. White gave, it often referenced policies in that report, and most of the policies that it referenced, it showed that we had done something within the first, within the last two years. So, that was an excellent achievement for us as well. I do have a question for Mr. Hales. I think at the last board meeting, I had put on the agenda some discussion about the bleachers at Southern Wayne. Can you tell me what's the status of those bleachers?
I had a conversation with Ms. Carter, and we were looking at one set of bleachers on one side, performances and wrestling matches and all of that, so we're in conversation right now.
So, you're in conversation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hopefully soon, we will have something to come back to this board. Say what?
I have not forgotten.
And I do want to also state that the rubber matting for the track field is being installed this week, I believe, at Southern Wayne, so I'm very pleased with that as well. And the only other concern I have is, Dr. Witcher, you know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We're working to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. All right, District 3, Ms. Cowan.
Thanks to all of those of you who make a difference. I'm done.
Okay, very good. All right, District 5, Mr. Foke.
And a little bit of a twist from what the other board members said, especially Mr. West, on congratulating the district and leadership and the schools, but I wanted to say that the number-one thing that a board member can do, the most important thing we can ever do, is hire the right person to lead this district. And I want to say to the board members that we, I believe, after seeing year-over-year academic growth in this district, we made the right decision, and I want to commend you all for coming together. I know I was part of it too, but I want to commend you all for helping to make that right decision because things are going great in Wayne County Public Schools.
District 6, Mr. Latham.
Well, I think Mr. West, not Mr. Weeks, but Mr. West, said it all, although Mr. Weeks had a good presentation too. But the comments by Mr. West hold true for the entire school district and everybody involved, so I'd like to, at least with our one donation that we had this week, because I love this, to thank Carver High School alumni for their $250 designated for teacher appreciation at Mountain Hall. So, with that said.
Mr. Sanders, our Lowers member?
Yes, I agree with what Mr. West and what everybody said really, but the thing, my takeaway is, all this success has been done with a third of our staff either being new or inexperienced. So, once we get some of these people up, going through the BT programs and everything, I don't see why we can't continue to grow every year. So, with that inexperienced staff, that's my takeaway. It's almost amazing, so thank you.
And I'm just echoing everything. I was not aware of the statistics until Dr. Richard just said them recently, how we have gone from, I think you said 91st to 61st?
61st, 62nd, I don't have it right.
62nd, well, that's close enough. That's just absolutely astounding when you see it, and unfortunately, that news doesn't get out to the public as much as it needs to. Sometimes we don't do a good enough job of patting our teachers and our principals on the back to tell them what a great job they're doing. So, just want to commend them once again for the hard work and the direction that Dr. Richard and the central services area has put in, so just thank you so much for the hard work and the positive results. Dr. Witcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, I was asked today in an interview that I did with a local media source about various and sundry different things, and about an hour-long interview about our school data and district performance and overall district improvement. And one of the things I shared with that individual is, a superintendent is only as good as the support that they have from their board. And there are a lot of superintendents that cannot say that across North Carolina. There are some boards that fight few publicly, and that's seen. It is seen by the staff, it is definitely seen and felt by the superintendent, it's seen by the teachers, and we all work together in one accord, and I can say, I truly have that here. We may not always agree on every particular point, but we come together for the common good of this district, for all of our students in all of our attendance areas. There is still a lot of work that needs to be done in this district, and we're going to do it, but I am so proud of the support that I have from each of you to make this a better district. It is felt, it is seen by our staff, and that means a lot. Thank you.
All right, with that being said, I need a motion for us to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Cowan and a second by Mr. Henderson for us to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.